Welcome.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Opening session invocation will be led by Ricky Dodson, pledge allegiance by James Klaus.
Let us pray. Most gracious heaven and Father, we thank you for this great day to give us. We thank you for your love and care for us every day, Father. Father, we establish everything we do tonight with first be pleased and due first and foremost, and for the veteran and the children of all who come, Father. Father, we just thank you for the work you've done in Julie Miller's life, getting her back to work, Father, and healthy, that clean bill will help. We thank you and pray to you for that, Father. And we establish the giving from the stands that we've done, as Jude is named the cry.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll take a motion for the approval of amendments from the October 8th, 2024 meeting. Motion by Ben Danner, seconded by Shirley. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Additions or deletions to the proposed agenda item? Need to add, consider approval of items for the surplus sale? Will add that in new business? Do you have a motion to add that? Motion by Melissa Savage.
Second.
Seconded by Mitch Stonecifer. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any other additions or deletions? We'll move to approval of the November 4th, 2024 board meeting agenda. Do you have a motion?
No motion.
Motion by Alice Reed, seconded by Mitch Stonecifer. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, and we'll read all of the consent agenda items together, and we'll prove those all as one. Number one is 141 F- Physical Year 25 General Purpose School Revisions, number three. Number two is 142 Physical Year 25 CTE Perkins Revision, number one. Number three is 142 Physical Year 25 Title 1A Revision, number two. Number four is 142 Physical Year 25 Title 4 Revision 1A. Number five is 142 Physical Year 25 CTE Perkins Reserve Revision, number two. Number six is 142 Physical Year 25 CTE Perkins Basic Revision, number two. Number seven is 142 Physical Year 25 Title 1A Revision, number three. Number eight is 142 Physical Year 25 Title 4 Revision, number three. Number nine is Livingston Academy FFA Field Trip, 11/15/2024 to North America International Livestock Expo in Lewisville, Kentucky. Livingston Academy Wrestling Trip on 12/7/2024 to a wrestling tournament at Wayne County High School in Monticello, Kentucky. Number 11 is Livingston Academy Wrestling Trip on 12/28/2024 to a wrestling tournament at Whitley County High School in Williamsburg, Kentucky. Do I have a motion to approve those? Motion by Ben Danner, seconded by James Klaus. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? We'll move on to the new business. On the new business, first item is consider approval of the following letters of resignation. James Reed, Molly Maxwell, Brandon Wallace, and Laura Klaus as middle school cross-country coach. I'll take a motion. Motion by Rick Dodson, seconded by Ben Danner. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Number two, consider approval of CCBCC Operations LLC and Overton County Schools Agreement. I'll take a motion for approval. Motion by Shirley Myers, seconded by Alice Reed. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, for the personnel matter concerning Julie Miller, the chair recognizes Dr. Donnie Holman, the Director of Schools.
I have distributed to you copies of the charges supporting the four-day suspension of Julie Miller, a teacher with the Overton County School District, that I will give you a few minutes to review. So, I'm gonna pause now until you all have time to review those.
Based upon these charges, as Director, I recommend that Ms. Miller be suspended from service for a four-day term as a tenure teacher. Since this, that suspension has already occurred, any hearing requested would be to determine the sufficiency of the charges that warranted this suspension. I would also request that a copy of the charges be attached as an exhibit to the minutes of the meeting.
Dr. Holman has recommended charges confirming the suspension for Julie Miller, a teacher employed by this board, and he is requesting that Ms. Miller be notified of her opportunity for a hearing resulting from this recommendation. The only decision this board is charged with making at this time is that if any of these charges is true, suspension from service as a teacher was warranted, and that Ms. Miller has a right to a hearing on these charges. If there are any discussion from any member of this board concerning the charges?
I have a question. So, I've written in this where the conversation alluded to the fact about her license being flagged. Can someone explain to me? Anytime a teacher is suspended, their license is flagged, and then the licensure review board of the state will look at that.
And how long does that flag attach to their licensure?
Just until the, until the review board looks at it and determines them, determine, makes their determination. After that, then the flag will go off. Any other discussion?
Would any member like to make a motion that if any of these charges is true, that suspension from service was proper, and that Ms. Miller be given notice of her right to a hearing before a hearing officer whom the Director of Schools will appoint?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I have a motion about my case, and seconded by Shirley Myers. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Dr. Holman, would you please notify Ms. Miller that this board has voted that any of these charges presented are true, that suspension from service was warranted? Please give Ms. Miller notice of the right to a hearing on these charges with stipulation that her request for a hearing must be received by your office within 30 calendar days of receipt of the notice. This notice should be provided to Ms. Miller by certified mail, return receipt requested by First Class U.S. Mail, by personal service, email, and by any other reliable and necessary means. As Chair of the Board, I am also directing that a copy of the charges of suspension against Ms. Miller be attached to the minutes of this meeting of the Board.
Yes, I would.
Then we will move to item number four, which is consider approval of items for a surplus sale. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ricky Dodson, seconded by Ben Danner. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
First, it said December, so I think, usually we have them at the year-end, but these items are all computers, and we did not have, there's not enough value in them to even auction these, so the state said that we could recycle, let's say recycle what we, and we didn't have a lot of room, so we're gonna go ahead and approve these items so that we can get rid of them.
Do we have no buses this time, as hell?
Yeah, we will approve more items, but this is just the computers, so we can go ahead and get rid of them.
Next, the Board recognizes OCA President Jennifer Allen.
Good evening. Well, we've made it to the end of the first time weeks and halfway through the second one. As far as I've heard, everything seems to be going smoothly. We're all kinda curious about what the weather's gonna do to us, 'cause it seems to be summer still, but other than that, I think everything's going real smooth, and Rickman's really, really happy to have Julie back with us. It's nothing short of a miracle, really it is. So, we feel very blessed. Thank you.
Do we have any public comment?
No.
All right, anybody have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Motion by Ricky Dodson, seconded by Alice Reed. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the work session agenda. Thing we have on the work session is safety and security update.
I'd like to tell you all about the safety meetings and security meetings that we've had.
Drop back.
I'd like to go ahead and tell you all about the security meetings that we've had at each one of the schools, except for Wilshire, there's a schedule for this Friday. But all the others, we've had those, they've gone really well. That included Brandon Masters with Homeland Security, the school SROs, the school administration, and the sheriff came to some of those. Again, they all went really well, and the focus at these, at the schools was threats, and the consequences of threats, and the seriousness of it. And Brandon Masters did a really good job of explaining to these students about the consequences, one of which is if convicted of this, it'd be a felony, and how a felony follows these children, all through their adulthood and through their life. So, and by the way, the students were excellent at every school we went to, and asked questions, and this went really well. I think they, I think they were really listening.
So, we had feedback from parents, yeah.
I personally haven't, but I'm sure that the principals of the schools have. Also, pictures were taken of these, and they were put on the school websites, excuse me, Facebook pages, school Facebook pages is what I'm missing. And, and there may be some comments there on those. But I think that was well worth our time. It was a really good thing. I'm really proud that we did that.
I think going into next year, we need to make that part of the handbook to the parents and the students, son.
And the penalties then might change, too. The legislature's very upset about this. Talking about maybe spending a night in jail just to give them a warning. So, they're going in their direction. We need to make sure.
Well, they talked about that when we got to, that the school were training, and they talked about they were changing some of the wording to, what was it? It was warranted and not warranted. And so they, they were, like, some of the penalties were going off that, so I think they prompted the legislature about it, so.
Felony is a...
I just want the community...
A really large charge.
It's a large charge, that's right. I just want the community to see that we're taking it seriously, and we're trying to be proactive and prevent, as opposed to dealing with an issue after it's here. We're trying to prevent as many as we can, yeah.
Anyone have anything else?
I'd like to talk about the film that goes on the doors that we might consider. They just had on all the TV channels last week that so many schools had done that, and that so many were looking at them because they did say it did stop the bullets from coming in. So, maybe we could put that in our budget and consider it, you know? When Crystal finds the money, she's working on it.
There might be a grant out there someplace.
It keeps coming off, and some of these counties...
There might be a grant out there someplace that could be reason for that.
They've tried, yeah. But some of these counties are going, I mean, you talk about way out, expensive security.
Get a list of all the doors, and that way we'll know.
Get the measurements. We have a lot of doors since they started putting them so you could go to the outside.
Do we know the dollar amount?
We do, I don't have it with me right now, but just send that, yes, the list.
So, we do have that?
That's what they said too, because it has to be on all new construction. I think.
Yes.
But they did say, they were looking at old doors, some of the schools, and they were gonna replace the doors if it weren't for, you know what I mean?
So, that list you got, do we know the dollar amount?
We do, I don't have it with me right now, but.
Did you send that?
Yes, I will.
What about the, you know, it's all new, trying to learn the email we got about the scores, the school scores, what, I'm trying to figure what these numbers mean. Is that the final?
Yeah, and all that is still embargoed, but we'll be, we'll talk a lot more about that a little later.
Something may change.
No.
No, no.
You just can't tell anybody but you.
But, but we'll be talking a lot more about that.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, we'll end this work session.